All right, Mayor.
Okay. Let's call the commission meeting to order. Please rise again and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the roll please, Renee?
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Canfield.
Here.
Commissioner Orthwine.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Here.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes, here. We've been presented with the minutes from our last meeting on October 11th. Are there any corrections, comments, additions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have the budget amendment.
We're talking about the minutes.
We're just going over the minutes right now, but I take it there's no changes.
There's a motion.
Yep, the motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 11th, 2024.
Second. Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwine. Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Here, yes. Town manager, in addition to the.
We'll be adding a budget amendment to the agenda. We're putting that under items for commission action as the first item.
Okay, so Resolution 2413 will move to items for commission action 10A. Very good. Our next meeting will be December 13th, 9:00 AM for anyone who wishes to attend. Public comment? Anyone wish to speak? If not, let's move on to the meeting. The local planning agency held a hearing today on the comprehensive plan amendment, ordinance number 24/2. Mr. Mazzaro, would you just quickly summarize for the record?
Thank you, Mayor. So the local planning agency met and made a recommendation to approve ordinance 24/2. It amends the town's comprehensive plan. This is something that we're required to do every so often. We had testimony by our planner, Marty Minor, who provided insight as to what the changes were and why they needed to be made. It removed a small section about our five-year capital plan. And then Mr. Minor also went over a new property rights element that is required by state law. So with that, if there are any questions, Mr. Minor is here. Otherwise, we can take that, entertain a motion to approve.
Very good. Any questions with Mr. Minor? If not, is there a motion relative to ordinance 24/2? We need to read it in the record. Very good. That's right. The action reading.
Thanks.
Ordinance number 24/2, an ordinance of the town commission of the town of Gulfstream, Palm Beach County, Florida, amending the adopted town of Gulfstream comprehensive plan by adopting the year-based comprehensive plan amendments as set forth herein and attached here, too, providing for severability, repealing ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date this first reading, November 8, 2024.
Very good. Now, is there a motion relative to the ordinance?
Motion to approve ordinance 24-2.
Second.
Renee?
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwine.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes. Any expert take communications on anything else to be brought to the commission today? Marty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Been a great 25 years, all the way back, all the way back, all the way back to gardens.
Exactly.
Bye, Morgan. Yeah, it's kind of big changes.
Nostalgic.
Yeah, it really is. A little sad. In any event, any expert take communications done here? Very good. Anyone who wishes to speak today, please rise and be sworn. This is going to be on a, the Irma's property, 2775 Avenue of Soleil. All right, very good. Who wishes to speak first on this application?
Yep, you're gonna put some.
I'm getting it.
Okay.
Go ahead, start though. They have it in front of them.
Oh, perfect. Good morning. I'm Richard Berman. I'm here representing already Christie Irma's. And we're trying, we're seeking approval for their private, private home in 2775 Avenue of Soleil, on the Plaza Soleil area of Gulfstream. This property is 21,851 square feet and is located right at the entrance of the community, facing two streets, very predominant, you know, property. And the proposed project consists of five bedrooms, five bathrooms, a three-car garage with a covered loggia in the back with a summer kitchen, an open concept living, dining, and kitchen area. And on the outdoors, we are basically doing a 15-by-30-foot pool in the back of the house. Getting to this. And at the front, just continuing, at the front of the house, we're basically designing it with two volumes and the garages facing towards the inside, so there's no garage doors facing the street with a carport area in front of the garages and then a circular driveway accessing, you know, Avenue of Soleil. We have designed this property with this project as a British West Indies style on a one-story layout. And, sorry. Well, here you, we can see, you know, the elevations as far as the style of the house. We have created volumes in the house towards the street, the two street sites that we have to minimize the impact and having a platform elevation and also to hide the garage doors, the three garage doors that we have, as you can see on the floor plan, we're facing the inside and not the street. We have at the moment an existing buffer on the west side of the property, existing collusias that we are maintaining and adding towards the back and the east side of the property, additional collusias to create the buffer to our neighbors and the privacy to our property. On the front of the house, as you can see in the landscape drawings, we have created layers to, and basically enhance the volumes and the, you know, layout of this house. And on the presentation that you have in front of you, at the end, on the last few pages, we have some more realistic rendering showing, you know, colors and the volumes. And we have presented on that landscape, I mean, the renderings, they show a version with the collusion on the street and without the collusion, so you can see the house and how the house is going to be covered by the buffer on the street, the existing collusion that we have. Same thing in the back, some of the landscape, you know, was taken out, so you can see the actual building and, you know, how the landscape is gonna affect the back and the front of the house. And that's basically a quick presentation of our house.
Question?
I have one. About the roof, what color the roof is?
This back is right here.
It's brown?
It's kind of a brown grayish roof. It's not 100% brown.
It's called, uh, gray. It's called Coca-Range.
Yeah. It's unfortunately on the, on the prints, you know, the printout is distorted a little bit. That's why we wanted to bring a sample of the roof.
I think we, I mean, we have some houses in town that do have dark, like, whatever you call it, not necessarily brown like the picture is, but.
Yeah, the roofs are trending darker because they're almost a pressure clean.
Right.
They, they're looking darker.
So the 13-inch?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, it creates a nice contrast with the white.
Earth tone color.
Yes, earth tone color, definitely. We're not going for a gray color, like, because it's too solid, too rigid.
It will blend in. The landscape, it's not gonna, when you drive in there, it's gonna be solid, solid.
No, we don't get it very often. In fact, I haven't, I haven't seen it.
You know what? I know there's one over in Plaza Soleil. They used to have a cedar shake roof and they changed it to brown because cedar shake was so, they couldn't do it hard.
Well, it's really hot. They don't recommend anybody to do it.
There's nobody that can install proper shea shake these days.
Yeah. Anyway, okay.
I have a couple of questions. One is a comment, one is a question. Can you just go over the, the west elevation again on this house as you drive in, maybe the landscape plan a little bit? Because that's really your, your sort of longest exposed run, I guess, your elevation, I should say, of the home, which again, one story is great, but you know, that's usually typically what we look at is, you know, what's the, the most exposed facade? That's, you know, basically the longest with left, not a lot of undulation.
Yeah, we created, and.
Maybe I'm just not seeing it with the hedging already there.
Yeah, this, for example, and this is a little bit different because the color change and.
Yeah.
And also we had to change from our last meeting, the color of the shed roofs on the back. We had to change the material from metal to tile, as you can see on your presentation on the package that you have. But here you can see places with, this one is just to show the house, and this is where the existing collusion that we have there.
Yeah.
And how high and how much is gonna height. In addition to that, also, we created different steps on the side. If you look at your floor plan.
Right.
Have steps on the side of the house to create more of a play with the roofs and not to have a consistent straight move on the side. That's how we treated that side of the house.
Gotcha. And my other comment, which, you know, with the 3D renderings we're doing now looks much better, is when you look at the site plan, you know, the, the front elevation and the step back, it almost looks like there's too much coming out to the front of the street, which is the design of the home. It's almost an H shape, right? But then when you look at the, you know, the elevation, it's, which is, you know, even without the exact landscaping, it's pretty soft. It's just, but I think, I mean, I'm assuming we go by the 3D. If you look at the floor plan, you're like, oh, gosh, the, the, the two runs are too long. But then when you look at it, when you look at the approach and all the different architectural elements, it's pretty soft and it kind of blends in a little.
It's, one of the reasons was basically because we didn't have, you know.
Correct.
We didn't want to have the garage facing the street.
Yep.
So we had to create this step back to be able to get into the garages. And then the front entry actually steps back out from this back windows and this kind of, as you can see from the renderings, this is landscape, so creates those layers.
Yeah, it's a little, a lot of interest on the front, but it's like, like I said, I'm glad that we have these 3D renderings, because otherwise we'd probably be, you know, a little more critical. And then you can actually see what.
It's, it's deceiving from the floor plan. And then when you look at the actual architectural front elevation, it looks everything flat, so you don't have that depth.
Correct. No, the architectural elements are great with the penetrations.
Yeah, I would say as a comment, when you look at the numbers, it seems like it's gonna be a really big house.
Right.
But I think you did a very nice job of making it look like it blends in with the rest of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
It does. So I think it's gonna be a great addition to that corner. Obviously, I'll be looking at it every day, so.
Yeah, we tried to, you know, we have, you know, the number limitations as far as, you know, lot coverage and VARs and everything. And we, we didn't go all the way to the fine number. I mean, normally we try to get all the way to the, you know, one square foot below the approval, but we're about 300, 400 square foot below the, the approved amount of square footage that we can have. And in addition, like, you know, we're talking that we created, we tried to create all those elements, so it doesn't look like a big block of house.
Right, so you could have gone two-story and it would have been a totally different look.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the two-story and that, especially on the front of the, on, on, when you access, I mean, Plaza Soleil, there's no two-story houses. The two-story houses are further out than, you know, the canals. So I think it would have looked kind of.
Exactly, exactly. That's what we encouraged.
That's what we encouraged, so we prefer this.
Hey, great minds think alike.
So, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question or a comment. So, the picture up there does show the roof more of the gray color.
That one, yes. This was the one.
As opposed to the, the package that we have here.
Yeah.
That, the door, so the door is a brown door, correct?
It's gonna be a brown door, yeah.
Okay.
And the garage doors are brown.
And the garage doors, correct.
They're pretty much synced up to the blue color. This back is.
Right. Yeah, we're trying to blend those colors and.
Rock comments by neighbors, because the brown's unusual. We don't, I don't think I've ever seen.
No, and I think everybody kind of echoed what I said, is on paper, it looks like this is gonna be a massive house if you just look at the stats. But I think looking at this, everybody's gonna be very pleased with, with the outcome here. I think it looks great from the street. And in fact, Lucia Hedge does a nice job of shielding that west elevation, so I think everybody's excited to see something on that lot.
I bet, yeah. Well, it's been a lot of projects.
No comments from neighbors.
You know, trying to be passed on that street, I believe.
There were no comments, Renee?
Okay.
We did one actually many years ago that was basically in addition with the house next door, that they were combining the two houses, making one big house. Yeah.
Well, that didn't work out.
Well, yeah, and the owner wanted to make it actually bigger than that one, that owner, those days.
Okay, if there's no other questions, is there a series of motions?
Got three motions for a level-three architectural site plan. The first motion is to approve a level-three architectural site plan to permit the construction of a new one-story, 6,675-square-foot British West Indies-style single-family home, putting three-car garage, covered loggia, and swimming pool.
Second.
Renee?
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwine.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes, and with any modifications, as they always have, regardless of those motions. Very good. Well, thank you very much. Congratulations. Good luck with the new home. Thank you. All right, Town Manager, CIP update.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. So I have with us here today Anthony Monroe and Ron Sellers, who are the town inspectors from Baxter and Woodman. So they'll kind of help with some of the details as to where we're at right now and perhaps where we should be. But generally, I think everybody that drives past or up and down Gulfstream Road can see that they have actually put the first lift of asphalt, obviously on Old School and Right Way, and on Golf View from the intercoastal to, to Polo. And then starting on Polo northbound, did they get to Middle with the? Just shy of Middle with the asphalt. What they're currently concentrating on now is putting in the valley gutters on, on Polo, correct? And where, about where the, like, or they pass Palm Way?
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
They're past Palm Way.
Right.
Anthony wants to stand up there so we can get it on.
Morning, everybody. My name's Anthony from Baxter Woodman. So they are now putting curb, installing curb between Lakeview and Banyan. That'll be today. They're starting to finish rock south of them from Middle to Palm Way, and they will be past Lakeview or up into Lakeview. They will have all that to be worked into next week. Their proposal is to hopefully get asphalt by the end of next week. I think at the latest, they said possibly the Monday of the following week for first lift from Middle to all the way to Banyan.
To Banyan.
All the way to Banyan.
Okay.
How are you going to cut down the streets, cut off the streets? I mean, are you gonna start right before Middle? And then how, how much can you do in a day? I mean.
It's part of asphalt.
Yeah.
So there'll be, it's usually two passes on a street like that, so they'll work down one side, you know, so cars can still get in traffic through if they need be. Obviously, notice would be given on the days when they're installing asphalt. Probably, I would say, two days at the latest. They're more than likely, in my opinion, going to go for as long as they can. They're gonna try to start early to get more laid and get it done.
Okay, so in this case, as opposed to Golf View, they, they only needed to make one pass on Golf View, correct?
It's, yeah, because it was, it was more of a narrow road.
Narrow, right.
So this one is an eight-foot travel in, I believe, on both sides. So it will be two, two passes plus because it's got a crown in the road. I believe Golf View was a sheet design from one side to the other.
Correct. So in thinking back with Old School, though, if I remember correctly, I mean, when they were asphalting, there was really no way for a car to get down that road. I mean, the machine was, it's so big that I don't think there's enough room for another lane, an open lane.
There is an, an open lane. If need be, I think it would coordinate with them. But typically, what they do, they lay down like a tack or a base or a prime before they put their asphalt. I wouldn't want to drive my car on it, so I wouldn't assume that the residents would either.
No.
So when they are performing that asphalt construction in those areas, we would notify residents, like, you know, we can have you out by a certain time, and then you probably wouldn't be able to get back in until a certain time, which would be end of day.
So when you do this, like on Middle Road to Palm Way, how much do you cut off for a day? I mean, can people on those streets, like Middle Road, go right or left? I mean, you, they won't be able to go left because you're coming down Polo Drive.
When they work the intersections, it would be difficult, like, time-wise, to coordinate traffic to get out of Middle. So I would think that we would coordinate with the residents, go, we're gonna work this intersection. Anybody that lives on the westerly side of Middle would need to be out by a certain time, so they could coordinate that intersection and then proceed north.
So I think what.
They have to do north and south, but it's, it's easier on Middle because they can go to the other side of Middle. Palm Way, if you can't go right or left, I have to go up to Middle or Lakeview to park. What I'm saying is, yeah.
So.
The residents on my street are gonna have to park and hike.
Yeah, and the, so it's almost like, almost a daily operation in terms of meeting. We have weekly meetings. In fact, we have a meeting after today's commission meeting to, to work on the schedule. But as it's turned out, we have to meet every day because their, their schedule changes on, almost on a daily basis.
That should be a two-day run on asphalt, so.
But how, how far, how far are you going to go on those two days? Are you going from Middle to Palm Way, Middle to, all the way to Banyan is what you're saying?
I'd ask the contractor what their method would be. From what I've seen in my experience, is they would make one long haul as far as they could. They would then back up and do the second pass, which would be the, probably southbound lane, which lane they ever decided to do first.
Okay, well, we need to.
If we could request, we could request them go block per block and do both lanes and then proceed north.
Yeah, we're gonna have to talk about that this morning.
Yeah.
From what he told me last week, they wanted to do the whole road at one time.
Okay.
One whole lane, and then the other lane will be open. Then they'll go do the other lane. And that could change, like, like you said, it changes every day. So now they're coming in at 8:00 in the morning after their meeting in the back, and they're talking to me. And if anything has changed from our Friday meeting, then I call the residents immediately.
So they did not do Old School that way. They did both lanes. Obviously, it's not as long, so we'll have to find out exactly and for sure if they're just gonna do one lane.
Yeah, I think communication.
But it is a two-day process.
Because the people on Polo Drive, will they be able to get out?
Not when they're in front of their house.
Right. So that'll be one day each way, sort of. But then if you block both lanes.
They told me they were not gonna block both lanes.
Yeah.
There would always be.
I think their method would be to go down one side, and we would request them not to tack on the other lane, so cars could travel on it.
Okay, so a question that I would have, if, if, if the people that are living on the side, where they're, where they're putting down the one lane, and they, and they leave their cars there, how long does the road have to sit before they can?
Typically, when they install it, then they would roll it, then they would do a traffic roll. I would say half a day, probably, at most. What'd you say, Ron? About half a day. Once they pass them and they do their roll, their proof roll on it, we could get them in and out if need be. We would just try to be with them and direct them not to turn sharply on it as to loosen the asphalt, because it is more fresh.
And we probably wouldn't want any kind of contractors coming to their houses, I mean, like the landscape people.
Yeah, the days that they're asphalt, and I would try to mitigate that traffic.
All landscaping people would have to find a, another day.
Okay.
It's gonna be almost four days.
You can't deal with that.
The landscapers have been trying, they know what's going on now. The ones that have been here, and they, a lot of them are trying to do it Saturdays and stuff, or they're, they're working through it.
The ones that we need to really pay attention to and try to catch is Amazon and.
FedEx.
FedEx.
But they even know a little bit now.
Yeah, but they, they just, I mean. Different drivers on a daily basis. They just seem to bully their way in if they can. And so, so we're just gonna, it's gonna have to be a, a real communication, you know.
I think we would also request from them just additional flagmen on that day for those, for that specific operation, and being very close proximity to the asphalt crew to watch for residents for traffic and things like that, and accommodate them.
Ask you a question. When you came in this morning, was there a flagman at your intersection?
He was just standing there. He was just walking out. Jimmy.
Jimmy.
I remember the same basis with him. We're best friends.
I mean, so we've, we've had some issues.
Well, there was one at Banyan and.
Lakeview.
Gulfstream Road today, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not Lakeview.
There, there are also, Palm Way, they, they, we've had some issues with the, their trenches that they, where they put the pipe in and then backfilled it. They, I mean, didn't really do it properly, and so it's sunk, especially back there in your cul-de-sac, there are large holes. So we have pointed those, these areas out the last couple of days, and then on the north side of Polo, the road, it's got some real areas where we hope they're working on today.
Yeah, here showed me they were doing subgrade between Banyan and Old School on Polo today.
Yeah, so.
That whole street would be removed. Their GeoGrid would be put in, your first lift of rock would fit in, and it would be drivable by the end of the day.
How do your flagmen connect each other? Because, you know, sometimes they'll go no-go Lakeview, and then the person on Lakeview will no-go back to Middle. And so you're kind of going back and forth and getting in the way of your trucks, too, that are trying to get their job done on.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a coordination effort, for sure, with the amount of traffic, with trucking and with multiple crews working in such condensed locations.
But they don't have little radios that they.
They don't. That's what I was gonna say, because, you know, sometimes they just don't know.
Yeah, because they're on the block of.
So, I, I mean, I mean, there's good and, and not so good work going on, so that's why we're here, and we have to go out on a daily basis to, to address some of these issues.
When are you gonna do Polo? When are you starting Polo?
Between Banyan and Old School, he's starting to remove that roadway today.
And explain what you mean by.
So he's gonna remove the existing roadway down to a base level. They proof roll that with a compaction roller. Then they lay down a mat, which is called a GeoGrid. It's just a barrier from that soil to your, your rock base. They'll install roughly eight inches of a rock base.
Right.
Then they'll come through and cut grade, which puts it to elevation for your curb.
Curbs.
They'll lay the curbing in, install that after. And after the curbing is cured, mostly, the next day they will in, install their last layer of rock in between the curb, which would bring it up closer to a finished elevation.
Okay, so after that, they're gonna come through and asphalt the whole Polo Drive, all the way down to Old School Road?
Yeah.
You wanna do the whole stretch at one time, correct?
That's what they're trying to do, which I don't see any reason not. Obviously, weather permitting, it's, it's kind of a straight shot. It'll be a long day for them, but I believe they could get it done.
In one day? That'd be great. I mean, especially if you could leave the other lane open, so at least, you know, people can park somewhere or get out, because there are a lot of residents along Polo Drive.
Well, comparing, so they did turning right in Old School and Golf View in part of Polo, and that was one day.
Okay.
So in comparison, less turns, more straight shot, more fluidity.
Yeah.
If we can coordinate the traffic properly, I don't see any reason.
Okay.
As the curbing swale on Old School and Polo, there was an angle issue that Mr. Dunham showed me. Is that?
I don't know.
I believe they'll be correcting that while they're there.
Yeah.
Today.
I mean, they know about it.
Okay.
So.
Is, when you go through and undo the mailboxes, and I know you're coming back and filling with grass, I mean, how do you do the dirt and the grass? I mean, how do you match up people's yard work and that kind of thing?
That was something.
Okay, so I, I believe the contract calls the replacement grass to be Saint Augustine.
Put it out there.
But we've already had people that have put in requests for other types of grass, and so the town will just, the town will get that grass. So we need to make sure that they don't, when are they gonna order the grass?
So like we discussed earlier this morning, communication with them on, you know, providing them with a list of certain addresses, whatever grass, so we didn't install and remove. St. Augustine and making more work. And obviously time wise.
And the driveways, are we putting those, are you putting those?
They have a subcontractor.
Oh, the, the, okay. And most of the driveways have gotten, I mean, you've taken more of the driveway out than need to be put back, correct?
Depending on how the existing driveway comes to the new elevation of the curb. If it's lower, then we have to go back and then raise that to tie in that elevation properly. That way, there's no standing water on the private property.
It's not the same for each driveway. Some of them, they have to go back farther because of the elevation.
Elevation's changed.
I understand what you're saying.
There is some excess material though.
There, there is.
Yes, on a lot of them, you're right.
And there also are some areas where there's a little less material because of the road movement. So that's something that's we're addressing as well.
Yeah, so I remember, remember when we went in and put, put that temporary two feet of asphalt down Polo and Gulfstream two, three years ago? Well, I mean, it did leave some piles of bricks. And so what the contractors did was they just left it there uh, in the right of way. And so those are actually belong to the residents if they want to keep them. So uh, otherwise then we'll just, just have to.
I would say dispose of them, but that's up to your discretion.
Yeah, so uh, most of the residents don't want to keep those.
Yeah, but you probably probably should ask them.
I, I know. Obviously, we'll do that.
Yeah.
Most of them don't see a need to keep them.
Right, there's been some brick driveways that have been damaged too. I, I know you've probably have seen them. I mean, how are we gonna repair those? The pavers, the bricks.
And you mean up into the driveway? Well, I mean, what.
You're gonna have to work that out.
We'll have to restore anything that's been disturbed and or stirred.
Has to be restored.
And the mailboxes, do you put those back up?
The contractors are responsible for installing the mailboxes as well.
Oh, okay.
And I mean, if they damaged them, then.
How do you deal with, and some of it, I mean, the residents say it's your fault, but some of them are so old, maybe they're falling apart. You know, how are we gonna address that?
Could possibly, but it, it falls in that line of it was at this stage before, this status, it has to be put back in kind or better.
So.
Give them a better mailbox for what they're going through.
Yeah.
What about the civic association participating?
To answer your question, we'll end up having to go out to the house.
So do we have a timing issue on this grass? Because it's about to become kind of a big issue for putting that, that long of a rundown on Polo. Um, with the first lift, that's not all St. Augustine there. So we can talk about that while we're on the record. You know, sometimes you're gonna have this thing where the residents want to hurry up and have their landscaper put in what they want and then send us a bill, which will both have fixing the irrigation and the putting in Zoysia or whatever other, the other three types.
Oh, as a boy, uh, it's like somebody's got St. Augustine.
They're not gonna wait for us to like come in with either whoever the contractor is using for the St. Augustine with different grass that we paid for.
Okay, well, I, I think what we're, what we're, we're probably gonna have to do is go out there and just do a survey and see what kind of grass they have and.
Well, what do we do today? Because he's laying the sod today.
Oh, great. Where?
Everywhere.
Everywhere?
Oh, that's what he told me.
Have you guys seen grass out there?
I haven't seen it.
Lazar, well, he had us call every person to see if their sprinklers worked because he said he wanted to lay the sod today. That's why this all came up with the Zoysia and all these other types of grass. And he said he's got one big truckload of St. Augustine.
Well, I would try to look and see who has that St. Augustine, maybe lay that and not lay the others. But I think we have to be careful. We can't have residents having their lawn people do all their stuff and then sending us the bill.
It's gonna be hard.
I mean, that can't, I mean, I, I don't think we have to have the contractor lay the grass and put it back the way it was because, I mean, we might end up with huge bills.
Uh, yeah, I mean, because the, the contractor's supposed to restore it to the way that it, that it.
Any areas that started in the right of way by construction.
Well, there was some debate under the contract, and again, I haven't looked at it in a long time. Some debate that the only thing they were required to replace was St. Augustine under the contract.
Well, that's a different situation. I mean, if we have to put in. Yeah, I mean, that's something.
Well, so, so sod is a bid item, which specifically references St. Augustine shall be installed in all areas. So as far as sod is a bid item, that was what they were required to, to bid on and that's what they're required to place in there. Now, if we want to do something different, obviously, there's gonna be a cost involved.
What's easier administratively cost than I was standing? Have them, and I've seen this before when we've done minor road work. They're laying all, all the St. Augustine covering up the lawns and then we, when we have time to take a breath in two years or a year, we're coming back and going through it ourselves.
I, I'd like to see what the status is of their.
I mean, that's the other option.
I know, but then. St. Augustine, they'll take over this other grass. You can't, I don't think you should do that because it'll invade the other.
It won't look good either, not matching the existing grass.
Residents, this is, I don't even know.
We would have to go through and make a list, I believe.
Yeah.
Alright, so that's item number one.
Yeah, I think we need to, we, we, we need to do a, a survey of, of what's there and knowing that what they're required to put back uh, is St. Augustine. And so if, if people don't want St. Augustine, I mean, it's, you can, it's obvious when you drive by the house, if they've got Zoysia.
Sure.
I mean, they're not gonna want St. Augustine.
Right, so just make a list of those homes.
Yeah.
Contractor does not put the St. Augustine down.
I think Georgia houses have St. Augustine or Zoysia.
Yeah, a little bit too, yeah.
I mean Bermuda, I don't see a lot of Bermuda.
Use a new grass, citrus blue.
Citrus blue.
So, I, I mean, I, I think we can, we can do that today. I mean, we'll, we'll do.
We'll need to if those runs are going in.
Right, and then, and then staff with, with the engineers can figure out how to address, I think, the uh, the non-conforming grass.
And then you're going back and doing curbs on the finger, I call it the finger roads, middle, Banyan and Palm Way.
Correct, once utilities are done, then the, the roadwork will begin on those finger streets.
Okay, so I, I, I know, you know that, but when you say once utilities are done, at least we don't, don't know.
I believe in middle.
So can we, can we just go down, just take a minute to, to go down from middle to the north. North on our finger roads and, and kind of tell us what the status is of those roads.
Correct.
So start on middle?
Middle would be, I believe there's two structures to be removed that are existing on middle. They have to cannon flush, which would mean to purge the new water main to flush it free.
So they're still working on drainage on?
There was only removal. There's two existing structures that didn't get removed.
Okay.
So they just have to be removed.
And then, then drainage would be done.
Correct.
Then they would begin to work on the, the road.
The water main still has to be cannon flushed, which is basically purging the line. There's a fire hydrant at the end of the street, the dead end, and then there's two water services to remain to be installed.
Okay, so they're not ready to work on the road part yet?
They could possibly start it, but I would believe that they would do the utilities first.
Okay.
That way, that crew is out of the way and then the, the road crew could do the third part.
Moving on down, so.
Next one is middle, um.
Palm Way.
Palm Way, they're installing rest of the drainage on Palm Way. Once the drainage is complete, I believe the same aspect would happen. There's a cannon flush that needs to take place, a fire hydrant to be installed, and I think one or two water services or the water services are done. Same process as soon as.
So the water mains are in and so they still have, they're still working on drainage.
Correct.
Okay.
And I believe they should be finished probably by Monday at the latest with the drainage. They're pretty far along on Palm Way.
They are.
On Banyan, no utilities are in already as far as water and or drainage.
Correct.
So that would be the next.
Banyan was the last one they were.
That's Thanksgiving week about.
Palm Way should be finished up today with all the drainage.
Yeah.
All they have to do is tie in to that one, they gotta remove that one box.
At the very end of that cul-de-sac.
And then tie into the outfall, then they're done there. All the boxes have been set.
Okay.
Yeah, so the Banyan finger going west from Polo is the one that's got the most work, like there's not a whole lot going on there.
Correct.
Okay.
The roads aren't getting smaller, like Middle Road, did you get that? Somebody thinks the road's going to be smaller on Middle Road? I said, no.
We are getting that from residents. They think the road's.
Because I've gotten calls over that. I'm like, no.
Well, the valley gutters are eating into the road a little.
Right, okay, thank you.
The valley gutters make them look.
Smaller. I agree with that. But they're saying the road. I said, what are you talking about?
Most cases.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, you know, she knows what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Because I've gotten residents call me and saying the road's going to be smaller. And I said, no, look at the valley gutters. Once they're in, the road's not going to be smaller.
It might be referring to where that stakeout is on the, on the easterly Middle Road, east of Polo, where we're re-centering the actual road that's kind of to the south of your right of way. They're going to then re-center that road in your right of way properly. But as far as.
Talking about the, the one, one line, basically.
Correct.
Yeah.
So it looks like where the layout is, that it's coming into someone's property, but what they're doing is re-centering the road in your right of way.
It's gonna be still the same width, it's just not gonna be in the same place uh, in, in the right of way.
Now, she's speaking of Middle Road. She's not talking about Polo. She's speaking of Middle Road. The residents on Middle are thinking the road is, is smaller.
On West Middle, East Middle.
Uh.
The whole road.
Yeah, all in middle. Well, East Middle will not be smaller, can't be smaller.
That's the part of this.
It can't get any smaller.
And, and, and West Middle is not gonna be.
Any smaller. That was the concern of the.
Narrow.
Yeah.
Not at all.
So West Middle, you're talking about you re-centering, I mean.
No, that's, that's.
That's why I'm not East Middle. You're re-centering the road.
About fifty percent of that road is skewed to the south, hugging the right of way to the south. So the design was then to bring the road back to the center of the right of way for proper easement on both sides.
Okay, so how much are you taking off the north side of the road?
A few feet, I'd say three to, they're shifting about three foot, three foot to the north from where it is now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you making it wider too or just shifting?
It's just.
It's going to stay that small?
And only half of it. The other half that's closer to Gulfstream is already centered in the right of way perfect.
Okay, so it's only some of the road.
This and then curves right now and afterwards it will be straight.
Okay.
So you're not just. So you're not taking three feet by Gulfstream, you're taking it more by where Polo is and then it, okay.
It's a part of the traffic?
The, the Cat Lady's House, there's a lot of landscaping there, right? On the edge of pavement, it's not gonna be three more feet into that area because that, that area is already pretty, pretty, pretty close to where it is, right? The Candice Arms House.
That's the way Gulfstream Road is right now. I mean, it, it's not centered in the right of way.
I know.
Especially on the south end, but right of way on, on the west side of Gulfstream Road is only about that wide. Most of it's on the east side. So.
Any other questions or?
Comments.
Comments regarding the CIP at this point.
Anything you're hearing from residents, I mean, we, I mean, uh.
I think we're, we're good right now.
Renee is, she, she is the firewall. Uh, she talks to people.
So we're stopping the sod truck or at least holding it up a little bit today.
Well, we'll talk to him as soon as I get here.
Survey. We, we have not, I have not seen any, any trucks with sod on them.
If you have Zoysia, then everyone's going up, getting upset about it coming into the holidays. Uh, they're not to have their landscapers just start ordering sod. It's gonna have to have some dirt there for a while, so you all get.
Yeah, it's gotta have the proper.
About to be coming in before Thanksgiving with.
Yeah, it's gotta have the proper backfill.
They gotta have a little, you all have to have a little time because the town's coming anyway.
Yeah, they, uh, uh, some, not all of the valley gutters have been a backfilled. Yeah, but they're working on that as we speak.
The third leg of this to avoid unnecessary back charges, as John has articulated. What are we doing about the landscape, the irrigation? Because most of the irrigation is smoked once the valley gutters go in.
Yeah, I mean.
Where the loca, because the sprinklers are all too close to the road. I mean, I moved mine like five feet back into the hedge, but a lot of people haven't done that up.
Isn't that the responsibility of, I mean, if they?
Have to look into the contractors. I had a com, communication with them this morning. He's stating what he's seen in the contract that they're not responsible. My experience from other contracts, I'd have to dive in again on this one, that they're responsible for repairing any irrigation.
We're in this gray area of, uh, you know, like you got everything, the valley gutter going in that the sprinklers close to the road are done. You got the poly sticking out and then it's like, well, the neighbor's just gonna be like, okay, we'll, we'll fix it. Or are we fixing it or is the contractor fixing it?
That's crazy. So they can't just throw sod down without irrigation. So they have, they have to do the irrigation prior to, prior to laying down the sod. That's gotta be part of their contract. There's a. Implicitly. There's a line item for repair relocation of unforeseen existing irrigation systems, thirty thousand dollars. So there's a significant amount that is, is part of that, so that is their responsibility. Yeah, so we don't want, you can't have sod laid down. It looks like they want to just throw this stuff down.
No.
Without fixing the irrigation first.
Yeah, no, they're, they're just backfilling now to avoid the liability of that void behind the curb to the existing ground.
So they're just putting dirt in.
Communicated to, to.
Okay, but you said there was a truckload of sod out here.
Yeah, well, I think that's why he asked me to call all these people to see if their sprinklers were working. Before he laid the sod.
But we haven't, we haven't gotten back to it yet, right?
No, we did.
Okay, well.
She got everybody Wednesday.
Look, we have a meeting with them in about four minutes. And they will talk about this.
So ideally, you know, you gotta put it back the way it was, but ideally if we get everything stable, get the grass organized. If the homeowner and their landscaper is gonna come back, which we do all the time. I, I mean, I'm on Mexico from school, I'm moving sprinklers every other month. Um, the, uh, if they want to move and there's a wet check and it doesn't work in February, I mean, the owner's just gonna be like, hey, we know what you guys are dealing with. We'll, we'll touch it up, but yeah, we want to get it, get it working so you don't have a flood because they don't check the clocks either.
No, they don't.
Yeah, all that.
Whatever they destroyed during.
Yeah, yeah, and the homeowner's gonna have to realize, then they have to tweak it next year.
Fix and repair all that irrigation. That before sod gets down. And they have to go over with the homeowner. All right, have the homeowner turn it on and make sure that everything's, you know, go hay before anything else happens.
So we, that, that will be our first item on the agenda today.
Right, okay.
Yeah, but I'm gonna turn it on. You know what? I think if people want to fix their own lawns too and irrigation by Christmas, I think we should encourage it.
Yeah, I mean, if they're gonna tweak it.
But you know, I mean, if they're not there, you know, we have the other Anthony that.
Can turn on their sprinklers. I know, because a lot of people can't turn on their sprinklers.
I mean, the exciting part, the exciting part of the, look on the bright side. The exciting part of the grass conundrum and the, and the irrigation conundrum is that means the lift is going down. We're getting close on each road, so you gotta look at some positives here and get down to that. That's our finish.
I can't wait till Polo Drive's done so people can see it.
That's all we're getting to on some of these.
See what, you know, instead of looking like a dirt road, like we're living on a ranch or a farm.
No, we're good.
Um, yeah.
I'm not wrong about that.
That's all I have.
One more question is, phase one will be done by first of the year probably?
I think date was set for substantial completion as far as mid-March.
So it's mid-March, okay, be through the season.
Yeah, I mean, we, we knew that we were gonna be working through the season.
Oh, I know, that, no, I know that.
Yeah, yeah.
No, 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 no. I just want to know timeline. I don't care about the season.
Yeah, I, I, I think they think they can finish before mid-March.
They're projected last meeting to say yes, they'd be done before.
Two.
That's phase one.
Yeah. Uh, but then, uh, we're good with immediately starting phase two, right? I mean, because that's the question that they had for us, I mean.
Yes.
Oh, I definitely think we need to start phase two like tomorrow.
Waiting for us to get it. So, you know, she doesn't want to hold us up from that. She wants me, she wants me walking all the way down to Gulfview to.
The town has to sign off on phase one, right?
For substantial completion. It should be fully operational as far as roads and water main system and storm system needs to be passed and approved and signed off on.
For substantial.
Change of completions.
How long will that take?
They're projecting to be done. Their deadline is mid-March. They're hoping to be done before then.
Okay. So we're on time.
Can you tell us? Can you tell us real quick? I don't, I know we want to get moving here, but can you tell us real quick what the punch list looks like after substantial completion for phase one? Like pulling out.
Curbs.
Curbs and that sort of stuff. Touch enough. I mean, there's gonna be a pretty long lift. I mean, you're all doing it every day, but.
So there will be things like you just discussed, curb, any, uh, issues with residents, um, grass, irrigation.
Trash.
Trash, the road, um, in drivable condition, the, you know, any touchups to the storm sewer system that need to be done. If we found any, um, again, once turned over, it should be fully operational, punchless, taken care of. Um, if there's any water service or water main discrepancies or things like that, any of those small things will be on the punch list.
Okay.
I think once we do phase one, get that done, it'll, it'll be better because you can come to Polo Drive and park.
And parking at your house.
Okay. Thanks very much. Uh, ARPV meeting is November twenty first at eight thirty AM. A finance report, Mr. Dunham.
This, uh, represents just our first month of the, uh, of the budget. Uh, we do have a budget amendment that we're, we're going to, uh, go over here in a second. Uh, but otherwise, there's nothing unusual about this, uh, these financial reports for today.
Okay. Very good. Let's move on then. Chief, police report.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. If you would, just accept the report that's been provided this month for activity relating to the Police Department. There's been no anomalies or anything unusual, so there's really nothing specific to talk about. But I'm more than happy to answer any questions you all may have about the report.
I have a lot of questions today. On Gulfview Road, you cannot turn.
Shabby today.
I'm in the thick of war here. Um, on Gulfview Road, because, you know, we have a hard time getting around with the school and different things. We have no left turns and maybe could we let that go for a little bit or no? That's just a safety issue.
I honestly think it's because of the design of the road and the, the way it pitches. I don't, I wouldn't recommend it.
Okay. Just because some, I've seen more and more people because they're just trying to get out.
Yeah, it is absolutely inconvenient and I will tell you, we have seen some of that occurring.
Yeah, me too.
There's probably a little bit of leniency associated with it, but, um, I wouldn't make any recommendations to change the design of making that a right hand turn.
If they do it, do it their own. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Just go down and turn around.
It's the trees.
At the, no, it is the.
There's just so much going on in that one particular area that it does make it very difficult to safely see if you're going to make a left hand turn.
Yeah, I know. But I've just seen more and more people, you know, try, just trying to get out.
Yeah.
By the way, I had a meeting yesterday with some school representatives who were very complimentary of our police for facilitating the traffic at pickup, drop offs. Uh, they said it's going very well.
Thank you.
That's sent on to you. Um, any other questions of the chief? If not, we'll accept his report as, as submitted. All right. Let's move on to, uh, resolution twenty four dash thirteen. Uh, Mr. Dunham.
Uh, yes, this is a typical, uh, uh, um, change that we always do in, in November. I will let, uh, Mark, uh, explain what this is all about, what the numbers are.
Yeah, this is just a, a, a budget amendment for the fiscal year twenty twenty four. Essentially, uh, the, the total budget was in line with the actuals. Uh, the majority of this amendment is just doing some cleanup, moving some between, you know, accounting line items. The only major, uh, budget amendment is actually to the building permits, which are processed by Highland Beach. So it doesn't affect the bottom line, but it just increases the, the revenue and the expense related to those building permits to, uh, true it up to the actual, which the actual was approximately one point one million for the year.
And this is not, this is typically the line item that we have to, uh, do every year.
All right. So we're just modifying, um, the, the budget according to certain distributions.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, correct. Are you any questions? If not.
Motion to approve resolution.
I think I need to read it, guys.
We're just trying to fly here.
Did that twice.
Resolution number twenty four thirteen, a resolution of the Town Commission of the Town of Gulfstream, Florida, providing for the appropriations of budget revenues and expenditures in the general fund for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, providing an effective date of November eighth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Uh, motion approved. Resolution number twenty four dash thirteen as presented.
Second.
Renée.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwine.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes. A couple of things. Um, before I ask if there's anyone else who has comments. The, at a meeting with the, uh, Anthony and, and Ron and staff a couple of weeks ago, there was some concern voiced about the, uh, compacting of stone by roadway, uh, on, on our roads. Uh, and to ensure that the roads are done properly, uh, and that they will last for the many decades that we expect them to last. We think it may be a good idea to bring in an independent testing company to just run some boring holes to verify the compaction is done properly. Not saying that it's not done properly, but I think doing this will provide some impetus to our contractor to ensure that it's done correctly. Mr. Dunham, I think you've reached out.
Yeah, yeah. We, we've reached out to Rebecca Travis with Backstrom Woodman and she's, uh, uh, going to be, has, have you heard back from her? She's gonna send them, send us some, uh, opportunities of, uh, the people that do that kind of testing uh, so that we can contact them and get some, you know, some amount money ideas, how much it'll cost.
So we'll update the commission on that next month. Um, and then finally, twenty twenty five is the centennial for the Town of Gulfstream. It's founded April thirtieth, nineteen twenty five by, uh, Henry Pitts, Jr. And we are going to have a centennial celebration on February twenty second at the Little Club in coordination with the Gulfstream Civic Association. We'll be organizing that. There will be other events as well. But I ask you to put that on your calendars and, uh, as we, as we prepare to celebrate our hundredth year birthday. Any other comments? If not, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.